Welcome, everybody, to our September 28th work session to prepare for our October Barrow County School Board meeting. Thank you all for coming early, for getting cleaned up and getting your pictures taken. I'm sure it's gonna be a good-looking group. Kelly, you'll have the pledge and the indication at our meeting next week. We'll approve the minutes. We'll approve the minutes from our last two meetings. We'll approve the agenda. We'll go over some committee reports if we have any. Dr. Matro, you may have some recognition next week?
Looks like we will.
Okay. Right now, we don't have any visitors or requests appear for the board to change.
Yeah, I've got one fifteen man. I have to process that.
Superintendent's department report. Dr. Green?
Thank you. Good evening. It's good to be back and be able to share some data with you again. You know, that's where my heart is. So, we have a couple of things that we have reached some results we've received since our last presentation to you. We have Flashers Milestones results and SAT results. If you don't understand anything, but it's the college exam that some of our students take. So, first, I just wanna let's look all the way back to the spring of 2020 when the buildings closed and across the state we sent students home. The Georgia Department of Education immediately sent out an email and said, "Don't even worry about testing at this point." And then they submitted a request to the U.S. Department of Education, USCBD, to waive all federal assessment requirements and accountability. And we were the first state to do that. And USCBD ended up approving that for every state. There was no state required testing in the spring of 20. Remember that there were no students in new school buildings. It just was, we were just trying to pay some children's fees at that point. So, if you jump to this past full year, what, first of all, why do students even take Georgia Milestones? I think that became a question as last year was so difficult in so many ways for teachers, for families, for students. So, why were we even talking about milestones? So, remember that the Georgia Milestones is the state assessment. The end-of-grade tests are administered to all of our third through eighth graders. And in the course test, to some identified high school courses, it services the final exam. And those tests meet federal requirements. We don't just give them because they're fun. They are required by the federal government. And so, if you think about, those tests are measuring student, or I'm sorry, grade-level standards, no matter where students are performing. That's in contrast to Math Growth that you've heard us talk about before, which measures students where they are and adapts above or below grade level to the student's achievement and allows us to measure growth from assessment to assessment, from administration to administration. Milestones is strictly at the end of third grade, did you master third grade standards, whether you came in ready for third grade standards or came in above third grade standards. It's strictly looking at those grade level or in high school, those content standards for that course. So, then, the question became, why are we doing this in 2021 when some students were still virtual and not even necessarily in Barrow County? If you remember, there were some advanced school systems that didn't open back up for a long time, well after we did. Well, the U.S. Department of Education denied Georgia's request, as well as requests from all other states, to waive high-stakes testing. They thought it was important that we administer tests and see where students were, have some results to look at student performance. So, they did give us Georgia Department of Education, they came back with some guidance for that. We allow our virtual students the opportunity to come in the building. Actually, Milestones, it's not able to be administered remotely. Last fall, we administered the Math Growth test remotely through Google Classroom or Zoom or whatever platform our teachers were using at the time. Milestones has enough options. They have to come into the school building. Some of our families were not ready for that. So, we did a little bit of flexible scheduling. We had some digital learning days at the high schools so that those kids could come in for testing and feel more safe. We allowed some kids to come in at different times. I'll make sure I cover everything. Oh, we did ask you for a waiver to the promotion retention policy. Normally, we hold some of those Milestones results for our third, fifth, and eighth graders. Their promotion, student promotion are based on some of those results. And we asked you, let's let that go for a year and let's not add that extra pressure to students. And then, the Georgia Department of Education allowed us to count those EOGs at a much lower percentage. It is required that they count as the student final exam and impact student grades. Normally, that's 20%. Last year, we counted it as .01%, so very little impact. And therefore, it didn't really punish those kids who were safe coming into the buildings to complete those tests. So, that leads me to how did our assessments look? So, in December, we, for our first semester students at high school, we did administer the end-of-course assessments. Like I said, we offered some options for our virtual students at the time to come in. Part of the problem back in December was the Georgia Department of Education had not yet settled on what the impact of student grades would be. And so, we kinda had to tell students, "It could count 20%. It could count a lot less." So, a lot of students did come in. We had some higher participation than we expected because we weren't sure what the impact would be. By the time we got to spring, we knew, even before we finalized those first semester grades, we knew that it was only going to be that .01%. But by the time students tested in the spring, they knew that, A, we weren't counting their promotion or retention based on those scores. And then, in high school, it was gonna have a minimal impact on their grade. But again, we were required to administer those in person. So, I hope this is easier to read on your screen than it is up here. But I just wanted you to see our participation in testing as compared to the state's participation. Normally, CCRPI, that accountability measure we have, requires that we have a minimum of 95 participation, or it changes some of our calculations. We've never had a problem reaching 95% in the past. But you see that we struggled a little more this year for obvious reasons. There were students not in the buildings, high schoolers that thought, "Why am I putting myself through a test that's gonna have a little impact on my grade?" There were lots of bruises that you can see. But you also see our participation rate compared to state's participation rate. I do wanna point out that our eighth-grade math, specifically participation rate, is really low. Last year, those high school, I'm sorry, those eighth-grade students taking the high school algebra math, Algebra I math course, were technically required to take both the eighth-grade math EOG and Algebra I EOC. And a lot of parents said that, I'm not asking much how to take two tests. So, a lot of them did take the high school test. They did not take the EOG. So, that's what impacted probably statewide, why the eighth-grade math test is so much So, taking a look at the results, these points were taken directly from the Georgia Department of Education Interpretation Guide for Georgia Milestones last year. They were very aware of the systems across the state, how we struggled with instruction all year long, struggled to meet the needs of kids. So, they were very adamant to say that the scores should not be looked at across years. This last year doesn't compare to any other year we've had. We had a different group of kids, you know, they were missing some kids in the results. It was just an odd year. Some students were not in the building all year. They were learning online. So, there were various access to instruction, opportunity to learn. And then, to always remember, and I know you've heard Dr. Michael say this a lot sometimes, that these scores are just one measure of a student's achievement. It's one snapshot. It's one day in my life. It is not what we make off the far path on as we plan for instruction. So, these are our English language tests results by grade level. You can see Barrow versus the state and how many students were considered developing or above in all of the areas. I'll give you a second. We'll get that.
Jenny, what happened to sixth and seventh? There seemed to be a disparity there. They were lower than, than fifth and...
So, it's a different set of standards. I don't think in the past, they've always, sixth and seventh grade have always been a little different because remember, they're not, you can't actually compare fifth-grade standards to sixth-grade standards. So, it's how did students master those particular standards of the grade level? And one thing to keep in mind is students have, this included almost eighteen months of students being in that odd, were they in the building, were they not?
Well, and the year before, they didn't take the tests. So, you have to recall, none of them took the milestones.
I think, given the situation we're in, the scores are great. And, and I'm amazed that we did out through the state in most areas. So, that's right too. But there just seemed to be a slight disparity there. Like, we went from really good scores and then they dropped considerably for two years in a row.
And then built back up. And also keep in mind, this would be the first time that third graders and fourth graders had taken a standardized test because those fourth graders didn't test in their third year. So, this was a new experience. And why is this time around?
What are these test dates from? 2021?
Yes. We did not test in 2020. So, this is spring of 2020.
I think the other thing that's driving the lower that state numbers is we had more kids testing.
Right.
And the, let's face it, it's the lowering kids that get that.
Cool.
Yeah. Makes sense. I mean, it's hard to compare when you don't know which groups of children did not participate in testing in our system or across the state.
Yeah. And who's tested, want to test.
And we don't have any way to figure that out?
I can tell you for us, like, it's hard, first of all, to tell you who was virtual because that changed all year long. As students were at home and in class and quarantined and choosing virtual learning. So, it's hard to pick a snapshot of that day. I mean, I can tell you of our students did not participate, what groups they follow in, but we can't compare that to the state. I don't have that data for the state.
Well, I'm gonna editorialize. I probably would. But I'm actually, you know, it was, I'll just be blunt, it was ridiculous that we, that the federal government said we had to take the test anyway at this point, the point we did. On further reflection, I'm kinda glad they did because it just now underscores what I've been saying and what we've been saying for years, that these tests are not that valuable to judge our kids and judge our staff and judge our schools, their rankings. And all you're looking at right now, pretty much, are rankings. Rankings are the lowest common denominator when it comes to statistical analysis. It, there, I mean, there's a little bit to be gained from it, just looking year to year and trying to make some educated guesses from it. But again, I've said it a million times now, it's an autopsy report. There's nothing we can go back and do about it. And that's why we're at the forefront, and Jenny is one of the leaders right now in the GMAP initiative, to replace milestones at the elementary level, the middle, with what we do with, already doing with MAP, which is that progress monitoring, which is doing it three times a year, which is, or even more if we need to for certain kids that are behind. That's what gives us actionable data. These things never have. And to me, they just purged it by making us do that and then saying, "Don't, don't use the data for anything." If you follow, follow the money.
Sounds like money.
And, and you know that there are a lot of high-stakes testing, it's big business. And, you know, this is why I've pushed, and part of our, our new plan going forward is not to really pay a whole lot of attention to these or put, you know, too much of that out even in press releases, no matter if we all score 100 on it. Because we need to look at student growth. And that's what we're gonna be bringing y'all primarily going forward. You know, if we have to take these, we'll take them. And, but we're not going to, stressing kids and teachers out over these things is just not worth the payoff we get for it.
Well, it's also a waste of time because it is...
It's absolutely. It eats up instructional time. And that's, that's the really, one of the biggest crimes of these things. And I've said this since 2000, is it eats up so much instructional time, not just the testing window, but the days and days of prep and these type of things, to go back over things that you've already gone over that they've probably mastered. But you don't really know if you're not doing progress monitoring until that point. So, with progress monitoring, you can look at your groups and honestly, they predict pretty well what we're gonna do on the test. We've seen that over the past several years. So, I've gone from outraged to, I appreciate you doing that at this point. Because it gives a little more fodder for that cannon. And, you know, we have parents that wanna opt out. And I've never, you know, we give them the legal pieces, but it's not something we're gonna ding them for as a system because, you know, it's hard to disagree with that.
How do you feel about, in terms of high schoolers? I've never really understood the piece about it being 20% of a child's grade because so many children are just not good test-takers.
To me, it's just a random, random benchmark that they pulled out. I think, I think we have to trust our teachers more than we do with this. They know which kids have mastered and their progress monitoring, and they're, they're doing these things in their courses. I mean, are there hotspots and, and, you know, some teacher's better than others? Absolutely. But this, that's not gonna change that. That's changed through supervision and instruction. So, I, again, I think it's any, I'm just, I have a problem with any test that the person who's teaching the class can't see. I've always, that, that to me is an issue because you have to know, I mean, that's part of good lesson design is, all right, I want kids to know this. How do I get them that? Well, just by saying, "Well, it's the standards." Okay. But what's the actual knowledge base within that standard that you want the kids to know? And that should be up to the teacher. And with the teacher not knowing what the questions are going to be on these tests, there's really no sure way for them to know that they've covered that. And there's a lot of standards, you know, we've talked for years, since I've been in this business, about making standards, you know, deeper and, you know, more shallow and going back and forth and all these type of things. But without knowing what your outcomes are gonna be, you can't, I mean, of course, you teach for the test. That's, that's good lesson design. But you can't with these things because you don't know what's on the test. And the weighting changes every year. You know, what, you know, the number of questions that in one area might weigh a certain percentage in one, and then they change the cut scores the next year. So, it's a whole different ballgame. And the teachers have no control and no pre-knowledge over that. If, I just don't, I've never understood why that's the end-all, be-all, when we can progress monitor. And we've done this for years. But, you know, that's not an easy thing to package and sell and do those type of things. This is a, this is a simple thing. It's used for ranking. It's used for ranking, you know, pitting one district against another. We see that a lot, one school against another. That's not healthy for education. That's not healthy for kids. It's definitely not healthy for teachers. It's one reason we're losing teachers across the country. And I'll, I'll step back, but...
No, it's also not designed...
At this point, I could go on and on for hours on...
It's really just designed as a political tool so that you can, so that you can...
And sales tool.
Get states against...
And honestly, I've come more and more, as I've been in this position, to think it's detrimental to communities themselves. I mean, they line up with zip codes for the most part. That has been proven over and over again. And you just, it, it's just not a good measure. It doesn't help kids grow because the time you get the scores, they've moved on to the X-grade level more than likely. And you can't go back and see the test to see what they missed. So, how can you reteach them if you don't know what they missed?
I know. As a parent, when, when no child ever came in, and this is one thing as a parent that I was concerned about, when we looked at the failing schools or not failing schools and the way we tested. And now, as a grandparent that's involved, my grandson and stepmother spoke with me about it and spoke with Mrs. Perkins, spoke with Dr. Moten. One concern is, we don't wanna leave those kids behind and they help, I think math really helps us...
Absolutely.
...see where those kids are. But then, we have to worry and idea to say, "Yeah, but what about the kids on the upper end?" And I'm there with my grandson too. And I think math will help with that because teachers need to look and say, "Okay, but you got all these kids in the class and then you have some here up here at this end. We've got to look and we can't, we gotta challenge those kids. We can't just forget about those kids up there."
And the growth measures, so you do that.
Because what happens with this is, I'm not sure I'm gonna put this reply politically
correct, is, is we're averaging our kids.
Yeah.
And we're, we're taking that. And sometimes, you know, it's just one or two test questions from developing to above or above to higher. And then, they get put down in, you know, that, when you're ranking kids, it's, you know, it's one thing if you wanna set everybody up and rank us by, by age or, or height. Okay, well, but that doesn't help education. It's the same type of thing. It's, so, we're gonna tell you, you have this score. Here's where you rank in the line. Okay? What's the point? What are we gonna do to fix that? Well, they're already moved on to the next subject matter, or they're moved on. It, it's, it's an autopsy report. But it's an autopsy report where you can't see all the organs because you can't...
And in some cases, it's only...
You know, one of the things a good teacher does is looks at a test and says, "Okay, Christmas XYZ, I need to go back and somehow get him remediated in XYZ." You don't have that opportunity with, with these things. You have a general, it was in this area, but you don't know, you know, which part it was.
It's a different length.
Anyway, I could, I could go on for hours and that's not my job.
There is something we can do about it. It's hard to...
Well, I just think, I just think by giving it airplay, you know, almost said, "Let's don't even do this." But the scores are there and you all need to have them. But, yeah, almost by giving it airplay and press, you know, it keeps feeding it. And so, that's one reason we're gonna, you know, we're not doing press releases unless y'all direct me to...
No, but I think...
At this point, and these type of things on this. Now, we have some other things that we're proud of and, and we'll start, we're gonna work that away for the growth percentages to be put out there because some of those are really outstanding. And, and though, you know, I think it's, it's gonna be a big task because we've all been conditioned, you know, I've been saying it for years, "I'm not gonna worry about this that much." But our teachers and our administrators are still, when it comes to test time, they're like this because we've been conditioned for two decades. So, it's gonna be, it's easy to say, it's gonna be harder to break.
And I think it's more as a parent stuff, I wanna see more for me. Because you hear parents saying, "Well, I looked at your test scores and they don't look good." And they look at these things. But I think it's important for us as board members, if we're gonna talk to people, I think it's important for the public to understand the growth. You really need to look at the growth. You need to look at this and what does that mean? And help them to understand that because you wanna see that and why you wanna see that at all levels and then see how that falls into discipline of those older kids. Because what you see of those kids at the I N is you can have an excellent kid and then they get more.
They get more and they get in trouble.
And then, they start getting in trouble. A kid that never, you don't have, and we're starting to see that, I had a cool, send my grandson a product, so he couldn't use that as a crutch and tell his mama, "Well, hey, yeah, that's why I'm not moving on." He's not moving down, pulling his sick, but he's not moving up. And she's just wanting to get out there. And I said, "Don't really get after them."
They're, you know, the few colors of, of good that we get out of these versus the whole cob of not so great. Yeah, just don't take it toward it anymore. Turn it around.
All right. Are we ready to move on to SAT?
Turns out, that is where our heart is too.
Move on. Okay. So, now, let's talk about the SAT. So, we look at results of the SAT for a graduate class. So, last spring, class of 2021, what was the impact of the pandemic on that test participation? Well, imagine that, first of all, test registrations were just canceled in the spring of 2020. Some test centers closed and never reopened. And then, the university system of Georgia, the admissions department made the decision to waive the SAT, ACT score requirements for admissions. So, students didn't even need to go to a Georgia institution after high school. So, can you imagine a student volunteering, "Please let me pay money and go sit and take an SAT," when they told me I don't need it? So, if you will take a look at these results, that first column shows you how many students tested. And you will see it was a vast difference between the class of 2020 and the class of 2021. So, these were either students who had tested prior to the pandemic and things closing down, or they needed a score because they were owing to a institution that did require it, so maybe outside of the state of Georgia. But then, you can see our results. And that group of kids outperformed what we've ever had on the SAT on this scale score.
That's because only the overachievers took the test.
Well, they were, they're also kids that are planning to go...
Yeah.
...to college. And, you know, one thing, one of the problem, one of the things, we've self-created this in most of our high schools because the kids, we, you know, we're telling about, "Well, you might go to college, take the test." You know, these type of things. When I was in a private school, we made all of our seniors take it, regardless of what they were planning. So, our test score, our SAT scores were never good, even though we were a college prep school because there was a number of kids from other countries and that weren't going to college, take Christmas tree with their heads down. So, I think this illustrates that also. And, 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 you know, although I told Jenny earlier, I guess, I think it was today, I've, I always kinda thought, maybe they should get accepted first and then take the entrance test, you know, get a conditional acceptance and then do that. But that wouldn't sell as many SATs tests.
Well, you can see that that trend was across the state as well. Students that tested and high schoolers.
Overtesting. Yep.
So, what does that mean? And how do we move forward? So, first of all, please note that while we talk about these scores and that, you know, frustration with them, it doesn't mean that we're ignoring them. The teaching and learning team has looked at data from multiple sources, including Milestones, to make some decisions of how to best support schools. Our school leaders have been reviewing their school improvement plans to gauge progress. Dr. Beland will tell you that we've met with, are we done? Every school?
Yep. We've checked for that.
We've met with every school as we do a progress check to check in on their school improvement plans and where are they going. And of course, they don't have Milestones data from the first two months of school. They're now looking at the next set of data. We're looking at those classroom assessments, the Math Growth assessments that students took this fall. We, we are using all the data sources we have to move forward. And our teachers continue to use all those formative assessments to meet student needs where they are to focus on individual student growth, as we talked about. I think it's important, when Dr. Michael said, "We get very basic results from Milestones." We might know that a child didn't score well, they scored maybe in that beginning category, but all we know is out of four categories in that broad math curriculum, they didn't do well in numbers and operations. Tell me what skill they're missing. That's what we're looking for and that's what we get out of the Math Growth assessment is a skill level for individual students. And then, if I think back to what Ms. Stevens was saying about comparing, but in that case, fifth grade to sixth grade results, those are totally different standards. So, you can't even compare, I'm just gonna make up a number, a 5.27 on a fifth grade assessment to a 5.27 on a sixth grade assessment. So, not even measuring the same thing. As opposed to the Math Growth scale, truly, it is scaled across all grade levels. We can see students improving. It helps us predict how students should perform. And then, we work with students, I know we were talking to a school today, they're saying individual goals for each student of what are we gonna accomplish and how is that gonna show up on the next administration? So...
So, when is the next administration of the MAPS tested?
We give Math Growth again in December.
December. Okay.
Four times a year?
Yes, we give it three times a year. So, we'll, we take it the first month of school, write it in an integrity document.
Funny enough, from a parent's standpoint, the MAP testing doesn't seem to be as stressful on the kids either.
It shouldn't either. Testing should not be stressful at all.
Yeah.
Testing should be, "It's time to measure what you know."
Yes. Which is another way to get a more accurate...
It should not be that your whole future relies on, "Let's have a prep rally."
Which is interesting because MAP Growth is designed that they should miss fifty percent of the questions because it's adjusting and it's expecting them to miss them. And that's how it kinda gets down to that skill level.
Always is. You learn more from your mistakes than you do other things. And you try to make it safe for them to...
Not so. All of our schools, I know we do it three times a year, but are all of our schools will be testing certain children who have some issues?
Oh, we definitely use that aim to figure out how to support students and are they missing, do they need elementary schools, do they need that early intervention program? Do they need possibly some response intervention, interventions put in place to help them catch up on some of those skills that might be missed?
Okay. So, but, and then, do we retest them maybe before the next regular scheduled test?
There are some other assessments that teachers are using at the meantime. And we have like a program called EXACT HAP that we compete our MAP Growth data into that then creates a path of where students should be building those skills. of where students should be building those skills. And I also don't want to ignore what Miss Kelly said about those kids that are finishing scoring above grade level. Like this is also telling the teacher, what skills should those students be working on to continue moving forward, not just stuck on those maybe grade levels.
If they've got this mastered, then we don't need to teach it now.
All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Very good. Good job. Sorry to be rude. Anything else, Dr. Green? We good?
No.
Is used to.
Good evening. Um, tonight we have our invoices paid between ten thousand and twenty four thousand nine hundred ninety nine of the September. Uh, the first one is advanced education. That's out of, um, general fund, twenty thousand four hundred dollars. And that is due to be for accreditation for schools that is necessary this year. And that's district wide. Jigsaw Learning is, uh, paid out of federal SED funds for eleven thousand seven hundred forty four. Special education, social skills training, and that's district wide. Striving Media LLC, but paid out of Perkins brand for seventeen thousand six hundred and five and it's virtual job shadow for all CTA E students for this school year, our school year twenty twenty two. And that is for Baca, Wintere High School and Atlas High School.
So what do we actually spend that money on?
Uh, it's a program and it's actually used in six through twelve for our students. Um, and it encompasses, you name it, it's got it in there. It's got, uh, career exploration, it's got surveys, it's got job shadowing where they can um, look at specific careers and see somebody working in the field. It's got lessons that the teachers can assign um, where they can do resume builders and learn communication skills. It's not a CL building. It's very.
So it's basically a curriculum for these students?
Yes, it's a career-based curriculum for our CTA students.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. They love it too. Kids and the teachers.
Uh, the next one is Sheffield School Supply. That paid out a capital project expense for seventeen thousand one hundred and three dollars. And, um, this is furniture at Auburn Elementary School, thirty nine teacher vests, those were extra vests that we need to buy during the construction renovations. Admin tell me, um, consolidated funds, twenty thousand six hundred and fifty two dollars for exact half. I think we talked about that earlier. And that's for, um, in the elementary school. CAPSA healthcare, um, pay paid out of the CARES fund. There was a separate, um, grant, the school nursing grant out of the CARES fund, thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. And this is for medical cards for our clinics. We pay for twelve of them. So a couple of our schools have already been once that we didn't need to buy that for. And that's district wide. Forty five drugs manufacturer was paid on the general fund for thirteen thousand six hundred and forty three dollars. Um, and it's for a data center storage unit, which that's district wide. Cooperative purchasing paid out of CARES refunds, ten thousand two hundred dollars. And that is for adult disposable mask, thirty thousand and so, and that's district wide. In high end, um, consolidated funds, twenty one thousand four hundred and forty five dollars and two cents. And it was a book order for the classroom series books for Winder Elementary School. Any question?
Thank you. So.
Do you guys want to share a few photos of our properties with, um, our new elementary school? Uh, groundbreaking there week before last. Really good event. Um, really excited to get it ground broken on that. And um, there's maybe quite a bit of earth right now as you can see. Um, yeah, we've advanced, we're going to be on that right last week. Good about that. Uh, our transportation project. Basically, a new upper building, took took the skin off that building. But, um, it looks a lot different than that right now. Also covered back and, uh, so this is kind of my moment as well.
Any questions?
Was that mold I saw on the insulation? Was that, what is that? What was that? That stuff? That right there? What is that black stuff on that?
It's like mold. It's all white.
It's not a good, I was thinking of autopsy report.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Mo.
Update on our preparations for our Cogni visit.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you.
We have finalized our preparation for the artifacts for the next few weeks. Um, but for as far as all the required documents associated with the Cogni accreditation visit that occurred October the eighteenth through the twentieth, we have submitted those. Um, we had a deadline of five o'clock yesterday. And so now what we'll do is the team will work on the artifacts to demonstrate here with everything said in the standards. And we will, um, wait for them to show, uh, show up virtually and interview you and all of us, uh, on October the eighteenth through the twentieth. You should have received three invitations from me by now. If you haven't, they're associated with your forward email address. So if you didn't get those, those are the best, those are the best. I did see that several of you had accepted an invitation. So I appreciate that. Um, the, uh, I want to go over the schedule and talk a little bit about where that comes into play. And I've, uh, provided the schedule for you all. I think actually maybe sit back and I both provided the schedule. So I have maybe a couple of those, but um, it's going to start off on the eighteenth and Dr. Grant Michael will give an overview of the school system's improvement uh, over the last several years since the last visit we had. Um, and you all have received an invitation that by that is not required, uh, by any means that you attend that. But if you're available and you'd like to attend that, then you're you're more than welcome. Uh, Dr. Michael will be interviewing next and then the Board of Education from eleven to twelve on the eighteenth. We already stated on, just say, uh, period that time, uh, from eleven to twelve on the eighteenth. If for some reason you have a conflict, that's understandable. Um, just letting them and I'll let the, uh, lead evaluator know in advance that if you're not able to just say that you you will not be available. Uh, the team, uh, visiting team will break for lunch from twelve to one. And then we'll start the interviews of the remaining central office staff. Uh, they'll be divided into instructional and operational staff. So there'll be two different meeting rooms once we get into the same session that will be divided into, and then the team will break, uh, well, they won't break, but they'll work for the rest of the day to debrief and they'll actually go ahead and get their preliminary ratings of us, um, the leadership, uh, standard. On the second day of the visit, they'll start off with, uh, an interview of principals, followed by the assistant principals and the instructional coaches. They'll break for lunch once again and then interview the teachers. And then on that second day, uh, during their debrief, synchronous work, the team will be rating us on the learning standards. And then on the final day on Wednesday, they'll interview students, parents, media specialists and counselors. Uh, they will then work from two fifteen to twelve forty five, um, on rating the resource standards. Take a break for lunch, come back and then finalize their ratings, uh, for all thirty one standards for the school system. And then we have an exit presentation scheduled at, uh, four thirty. So that is the, uh, third invitation that you receive, uh, was to participate in an attempt and would like during these, uh, exit reports they provide when they leave. We get a full report, I think. I can't remember. I think it's about thirty days later, we get a full report that is much more detailed, much more lengthy. They'll just give a, a piece of, just to give the highlights, some of the things that they saw. Um, they'll talk about some of the areas that we, they feel like will do well, as well as, uh, if there's one area that they feel like that we improve. Suzanne, can you go to the other documents? So this is where the majority of our work began. We met three times with school visiting leaders who completes fifty five page document, I think it is now. So one of the areas that you want to be familiar, the easiest way to to familiarize yourself with what we are presenting to the visiting team is to read three domain narratives. And that's the first domain narrative you see at the top for leadership capacity. Um, I think altogether, the three domain narratives together are only about eight pages. But I think they'll give you a great, um, kind of synopsis of everything that's down in the, all the standards that are on. I think just reading the narratives will give you a good overview of what we're presenting to the team, as what we do and how we operate. So, uh, just scroll down a little bit, Suzanne, if you could accent the narrative. So right here begins the rating and standards. And so basically what we did was we all got together and met and talked through what types of practices, uh, processes and, uh, procedures we have in place for each of the thirty one standards. And then we listed what documents we have to show that these procedures and practices are in place. So everything you see in that final column that the bullet list, those are actually hyperlinks of the document that Cogni will be looking at. So when they click on strategic planning, it'll go to a folder that contains the strategic plans. Um, so everything you see in that last column all the way through the entire document is hyperlinked to our evidence. Um, some of that evidence is more confidential in nature, so it's not in this copy that's published. Um, we do work to make sure there's no personally identifiable information in there, but it's still not something that we can just publish for for everyone's consumption. But certainly with the team, there are certain things that they get to see, would be able to determine how we're performing as a district. So that's why you'll see the hyperlinks of this document. And also in the narrative, there are the hyperlinks to evidence as they read the narrative. They can click on the link when it talks about strategic plan, actually see the strategic plan, um, for example. Uh, if we could go back Suzanne to the previous one that you were on. And here's this page. Uh, these are some of the things that we did to prepare. Uh, Dr. Michael has written an executive summary. I believe it's his plan to share that with you uh, at some point. Um, we, the the long document you saw that's fifty five pages, what we call performance standards ratings were cheap. Uh, we went through and rated ourselves on all thirty one standards by different ways. Uh, and wrote the domain narratives associated with those. Uh, we looked at our own student performance data. So Ms. Sanger and Ms. Wright led us through an exercise to look at some of our student performance data and to provide a summary of what we see in the data for the team and send that to the team. Uh, we, you will recall that we did four different surveys. We surveyed teachers, students, parents and the community. And we summarized what we saw in that data and provided that to the team as a result of the surveys today. Uh, we we're still, we're pretty much finalized, uh, gathering all of the artifacts. Uh, and there are a lot. There are just literally hundreds of documents that we have collected to present to them. And I'll show you that in just a moment. Um, and then we did a correlation between the artifacts and which which standards we felt like those artifacts met. And we have scheduled all of our interview groups and I've sent out the link to join the interview to everyone but the parents. I've still got, still trying to confirm a few of the parents that whose names were submitted to the interview. Suzanne, do I have one more night? The artifacts correlation. So I just had to show you this because I was impressed with it, but this tells you the twenty five different categories of artifacts. So within each of these twenty five are multiple documents. But it also shows you, um, which those artifacts provide evidence to Cogni for each of the standards as they're indicated across the, um, bar. So it took some time to figure out what artifacts we had, but rather than place those artifacts five or six times with folders, we would have been one folder and said, okay, here are the artifacts, but if you're adjusting these various standards, here's the folders. And and look at the evidence. So hopefully that would say, you know, Michael was going to be able to easily be able to determine um, who we are and what we're about without having to navigate through a sea of information, um, to try to make it as accessible to them as possible. And that's what I have for you tonight on updating the Cogni. Any questions?
How many hours did all of our folks?
There is no telling.
We did our great best to keep as much work done as possible since schools, this would be absolutely fair. So we we really only asked, to my knowledge, to contribute three different times, three different meetings. I want to say those lasted, were from three or four hours, I believe, each. So we started in August and we had two meetings in September, uh, in September, closer to the end of September. So, um, but the, the, some of the other staff members were assigned the artifacts to go pull based on their job possibilities uh, in every single department in, in, uh, PDC. And that that took a considerable amount of time to pull up that documentation.
True, it did. Glad we only have two of us.
I don't know how many references, twenty five, they're categorized into twenty five main categories. Uh, but how many documents actually literally cover this documents to do the play?
So always a lot of work, um, and then pivoting it to do everything virtually, David has had to do this year also in a lot of cases, um, which, um, very thankful that he and his team were able to to do that and do it so well. We started off, I believe we started off in person, if I remember, and then we had to transfer.
First time in person.
So he had to change those things up as we moved along.
It would have been more easily accomplished every minute, six or seven more times, but, uh,
but it, um, and it's going to be interesting to do it virtually with, uh, with the folks from Cogni and not have them physically in in the room with us, but, uh, that is, that is the time we're in right now and.
And I I appreciate all the work that had to go in this. We've been doing this every five years and I'm glad we only do it every five years. For a long time because it's a lot of work, takes a lot of time.
David's.
Glad y'all didn't have anything else to do, you know, during COVID.
Doesn't like today now. I need to go back and do all the things.
That survey was pretty good. Is there a way we could see the result? I thought that survey was really good.
Yeah, we'll have, um, that'll all be in the final report. Um, all of that should be.
Yeah, I'd be really interested to see. That seemed like a really good hold check just for the community and I'd be interested to see what that looked like.
That community survey is a long one. They have the.
It was.
He does a percentage of parents who took it this time from, we were over twenty percent, but that's the benchmark that she did. We were, we're about forty, thirty percent.
I'd really like to see that.
Any other questions?
So, yeah, we'll have all that, um, after the report, after the thing, we'll have all that, all that available.
I think the probably one of the most rewarding parts of this activity though is that as we reflect back on what we've accomplished, I think sometimes you you don't realize how far you've come, how much has that accomplished, by the nature, until you start doing a process like this, you start thinking, what evidence do we have? And and there's a lot of evidence for a lot of amazing things that happened.
Really is. Yeah, it's, um, you know, it's, it's always one of those things you kind of dread coming, um, but like David said, when you're going through it and you're looking at everything, it's like, oh, yeah, we did that. You know, it might have been three years ago, but we did that. And, uh, you know, we, we, we've met that challenge, you know, and of course you also see some things and you go, yeah, we should have, you know, didn't realize we didn't quite get there on that. But so it's, it's a valuable process, but I am glad it's only every five years because, um, I don't think anyone would remain in this business if we had to do it every, every.
Sure version of MAP testing.
And back in the day, you know, it used to be the schools where each had to do their own kind of piece of it. And then, but I I really have been pleased with the, I think it's probably the last three or four I've, I've seen where they do the district level piece. This makes more sense. Having been on both sides of 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 that several times, it's, uh, but, you know, again, it could be something that could be taken away from instructional time and the principals, especially now, or and their teams are really, really piled up. So it's, David, this team have done an amazing job getting this, getting this done in this time of COVID and anything else going on. Fudos.
Thank you.
Just thanks. Anything? Okay. I'm just jumping right through. But, all right. I did want to give you just a quick update. Several of you had asked about the TikTok challenges that we've had. Um, and, um, we have been hit, if you all know, and I wanted to just give you a few, few facts and, um, Joe was and his team were kind enough to pull up the incidences from the past month or so. This is through nine twenty two. Um, we've had thirty one incidences that were either were or were most likely. Um, we've had 31 incidences that, um, either were or were most likely related to the TikTok challenge. And if you're not familiar with that, that's, uh, the devious licks that they, they get some kind of points on TikTok and students for stealing things or destroying things, which is just a lovely, lovely way to spend your free time. But, um, yeah, we're, we have not been as hard hit as a lot of districts have been harder hit than others though. So we're, uh, cost wise, um, and it's been everything, uh, things, toilets pulled up from the floor and in the bathrooms. I think the worst ones in one of the girls bathrooms, if I'm remembering correctly. Uh, the main thing I think we've seen is graffiti and soap dispensers that have either been stolen or taken off the walls and thrown about. Um, couple of air conditioning sensors, um, on here. Um, but the total cost so far just, it looks like, and I, um, just, this is without the hour man hours, right Joe?
That's material.
Material, oh, okay, yeah, $13,057. Um, it's.
And we have, we have determined who's done this?
We've determined, we have, um, last, last look was seven or eight that we have managed to track down, that administrators have managed to track down so far that are facing some pretty strong disciplinary actions and, and paying back some of this money. Um, so just wanted to give you a, uh, you know, that, with everything else we've got going, I mean, it's never a good time for something like that, but with everything else going on, it's just adding more.
I'll, yeah, I need you to define pretty strong disciplinary.
In the range from anything from, depending on their involvement, what, what, you know, what we have proof wise, I'll tell you, everything from, um, legal law, law enforcement charges to a turn alternative school. Don't think we're going to exp, exp, go with expulsion, um, with any of this because at this point, but, um, there's some, you know, it's a range. I mean, you know, some of these things are again, uh, pulling the wires out of an air conditioning sensor versus tearing two toilets out of the floor.
Well, my concern, my concern is that, that I don't care what they're doing, they're destroying school property. And it's totally unacceptable. They need to be prosecuted.
Yeah.
We need to send a message right now that we will not tolerate this. And we need to send that to the parents and they need to be making restitution for this. And I'm okay with the kids working it off at 7:25 an hour. Has it stopped? I think the kids.
Pretty much, and, and you know, um, I think we're still seeing some, Joe. Got a better pulse on it than I do. But, but unfortunately what we're hearing is now that there are monthly challenges, um, with this thing. And apparently the next one is slap a staff member. Um, and now on that one, I will be looking expulsion. I'll just go ahead and tell you and everyone listening out there, uh, if you assault one of our staff members, unless there's some attenuating circumstances, I'm, I'm going to flip for, for expulsion. Yeah, that's just not acceptable. Um, so go ahead and get that out there because that is just not. vandalism is, is bad enough and it's ridiculous and it's harmful. And it, I mean, our poor maintenance folks and, and, you know, and administrators that are poor maintenance staff, they've got a thousand things they need to be doing. And now, and they're having, been having to go in for over a month now and replace these things. But when you start assaulting staff members, you've stepped up as far, as far as that goes. And we're, so, warning to everyone that might be thinking TikTok challenges.
Are these more, are these mostly high school kids?
Uh, mostly high, some middle, yeah, we've seen it in, I think, two of the middle schools, but, um, all three high schools.
Well, the good news is the kids as a whole don't think this is cool. They don't like it. They don't like for people to tear at their schools. And so hopefully that'll help too, you know?
Just another, it's just another.
But I'm just saying.
Piece before we've seen from this, you know, they get these endorsement, endorphin rushes from how many likes they get, you know? And I, I see adults that get that too, when they're on, they say how many likes they get for a statement, you know? That's why they keep doing things.
Well, the first thing that needs to happen is their access to, um, social media needs to be better.
Absolutely, but.
Well, I'll tell you the first thing that made it not cool is when kids had to wait for 40 to 45 minutes to get into the bathroom.
Unfortunately, you know, and that causes all kinds of other issues too. And that's, you know, so we've had to, again, staff at the schools who are stressed enough are now having to monitor classroom, you know, the bathroom habits of kids that should be able to go to the bathroom without being monitored. Um, you know, we're, we're not allowing in a lot of cases for them to go during the, um, class changes because something tends to happen during that time. Um, staff's having to not do other things so they can keep an eye on that. And then kids are having to go to the restrooms during class so that we have a sign out and can track that. Um, yeah, it, it's, um, I'm, I'm hoping that part of it's over. But again, like I said, if we start assaulting, uh, staff members or each other, uh, that's, that's a whole different level. We're not going to, we're not going to hesitate on that.
I think you might want to include abusive language in that too.
Well, that's a form of assault battery.
It is, and it needs to be taken seriously.
So we're, we're keeping an eye, I know, um, you know, Chief, Chief Skinner's working on that closely and, um, with the administrators and a couple of folks up here, um, keeping track of it. So we'll, uh, we'll keep you posted as, as, whether the TikToks are on top of everything else.
Well, thanks for the update.
Yes.
Uh, no old business, no clarification. We're going to the new business, uh, consent agenda. Ms. Houston?
Okay, um, so tonight we have, um, the fiscal year 2022 or school year 2022 for book purchases. The superintendent recommends allowing all schools to exempt purchases of literacy and media center books and materials from the bidding process for school year 2020, 2022. The maximum amount to spend would be 1,531,400. And so, um, we are focusing on literacy this year with Dr. Beth McMichael at the helm. Um, she is doing a great job pushing literacy books, um, and materials into schools. Uh, this year we have been raising funds from the federal government in the form of American Rescue Act and was also awarded a grant from, uh, Georgia L4GA grant that teaching and learning, um, helped put together. Um, the books that will be purchased with these grants along with additional library books for BASSA and our yearly consolidated funds, also general fund purchases are not known at this time. So we don't know all the titles. So it would be, um, nearly impossible to put a bid out at this point because we just don't have all those titles to put a bid out. We've done two bids since I've been here for library books and I think we get one response because everything is so sole sourced and has copyright, um, issues on it. So, um, I am very comfortable, um, with this request and recommendation. Um, we will do the financial impact of the art fund and L4GA funds as a grant. We'll be spending up to $1,555,000 consolidated funds, approximately 181,400. Capital project fund, 25,000, that's the books, um, at BASSA, uh, for the library for the, um, additional students that came on this year. And the general fund, $170,000 for a total of $1,531,400. So anything like that we're going to order from Amazon, or Corner Books Store, Barnes and Noble, those sort of places, they will still have to go through the bid process and they still have to get re-putts. It's only the ones that are so sole sourced or have copyright laws on them that, um, would be exempt from, um, it's going to be the process. But everything I'm purchasing or, well, yeah, this is just for this one right here, so $1,531,400.
Any questions? Consent agenda? Thank you. Golden Productions.
All right, Golden Productions. The superintendent recommends approving the amended contract for Golden Productions for a total of $80,004 in compensation for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. The superintendent also recommends a budget adjustment to increase the general fund expenditures by $25,004 for the difference. All future contract increases will be approved by the board during or before the budget process that's going to go through this right now. Um, so Golden Productions, the original amount was $55,000 and there's an increase of $25,004 for a total of $8,004 in compensation. And, um, he has added more basics to each of, um, each event that's out there. So hopefully the schools will not have to carry a financial burden for the productions on our end.
Questions? Consent agenda?
It looks like we're going nowhere. It looks like it's up front. And no questions that I ask. Wait, I'll see.
If it black and white, it's going to still sell out well and white.
Yeah, and he's put in place a number of productions for the schools.
Right, that we've asked for. Yeah, it's, um, it's a better contract for us than it was moving forward. We'll see how it goes the rest of the year.
Okay. All the revisions.
All right.
You still up?
Still up. This will be the last one. Um, superintendent recommends changes to the policy DJEB bid quotations to be placed on the table for color review until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, this goes along with my previous request that this, uh, evening's for, um, extensions of textbooks, films, slides, video materials or other items, um, that are deemed, that are coming from the publisher, distributor or agent. There's just no other way to get bids or quotes on those items. So we're going to put this in writing in our, um, in our policy DJEB. So Jennifer Houston does a continuously call the directors and principals and say, where's your backup to this, um, this purchase? Uh, we're also exempting test and test scoring services of standardized examination from the publisher or license agreement. Again, they can't buy these from any other, um, places to get a quote. And then also any single source purchases based on evidence that a particular commodity or service may be obtained from only one source and no similar commodity or service is available from a different source, that will adequately meet the department's requirements and specifications. The director may recommend to the assistant superintendent for business services that the commodity or service be purchased sole source based on supporting documentation in the requesting department or principal. However, all these, all these purchases that are over $25,000 will have to continue for approval. They're just not going after the bidding process because they're sole sourced. It's not really a change from what we've had to do anyway. Because there, you can't, you can't get to, for somebody that only, only one person sells something.
Yeah, it helps simplify the process for the school level especially and, and the, uh, director. So it's, they, you know, they, they have a lot of trouble trying to discern, how, you know, how do I get three bids for something? You know, and then it may be the same company and they're different things, but they're all sole sourced. It, it slows down the, the purchasing process. Um, I don't think there's anything in here that really changes what we're doing except to try to help streamline. And, uh, most of the larger districts have this policy of something very similar. And of course we are, been larger and we're getting even larger. And the other thing is we, now we're at the point where we can get by these, you know, resources that we haven't been able to in the past. And thanks to the grants that are coming in and some other things that are going on. Um, so it's, makes it a lot, just more streamlined, it's.
Just like Dr. Max said, we efficiently borrowed the warnings from, um, some districts randomly, fall in, fall in camp, but add to all camps. We looked at all of their processes to get this word.
Any questions? Consent agenda? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, well done. Meeting dates for fiscal 2022, any have, any kind of conversation about those? It was listed in the.
No, they're listed there for you. Um, just if you would, I will check them before the meeting, before we vote on them. Um, but really not any changes as far as when they hit from this past year. Um, just move the dates to where they need to be and, um, kind of the normal, one of the normal things we do every year. And if you see anything that looks out of whack or out of place or something we've missed, let us know.
Okay, consent agenda? I don't believe we have any committees meeting. We knew on that front.
Bill, excuse me, but, uh, we need to vote on this anyway in case something comes up during the middle of the night. We have to have a call committee read that happened last month with building.
Can you do that at the board?
So can we vote on it?
Vote for alternations. Yeah, I'll make a note. We have a water round next week.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
That being said, we're going to an executive session to discuss and deliberate upon appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disclaration action or dismissal, periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer employed and interview applicants for the position of superintendent. Okay?
Yes, yes. Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay, we'll take a break. Thanks, everybody.